I didn't come with any prepared questions, so just have a couple comments. First of all, thank the three of you. I know this is really tough and this is going to be a long, brutal budget hearing, and I don't look forward to it. Thank you, and your helpers in the box over there too. Just thank everybody. I know we're in for a battle. I think we're off to a good start, I will say. I just, I don't know if anybody noticed, we have over 40 people here today. I think in my 15th budget here, I think this may be a record for the opening day of the budget hearing. So it's obvious to me that people are taken as serious and they're going to be dedicated and prepared to roll up their sleeves and do the work. So with that, that's all I have to say right now. You can put me down for a round two if I come up with a question for later, and that's about it. But thank you, everybody.
Thank you. It doesn't have to be brutal. I mean, it's just a conversation. It doesn't have to turn brutal. Chair Dow, you ready or you need more time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you indulging me this morning.
No problem. Followed by Alderman Silverstein.
All right. I'm glad you said what you said regarding the TIF surplus reports. I believe that every alderman should have an opportunity to have a review and sit down with both DPD and the Budget Office to make sure that we are all aligned. And so I will be reaching out to you because there are at least two TIFs that I think require some additional conversation.
Absolutely.
I wanted to ask a question about the surplus, which goes to a portion of that I was surprised to see, hadn't actually thought about it, goes to the SSAs. And I'm wondering if you could tell me what the process is for getting that money back to them. My understanding, on the one hand, I hear that it should come directly from Cook County. Cook County should write those checks and send it to them. But then I hear that both the Budget Department and the Finance Department are involved with the sign-off from DPD, which delays the check that those SSAs should get, and it doesn't all come at once. So can you tell me what that process is transparently so that I can let people know?
I'll take the second piece first about it doesn't all come at once. So TIF doesn't all come at once. Our surplus is not distributed all at one time, partly because the surplus is made up of both declared surplus as well as expiring TIFs. And expiring TIFs, we could only use the dollars for work done or projects completed through the end of the year, and it has to go through a reconciliation process and an audit so that those TIFs can be closed out. So while the first distribution of TIF surplus from us to the county, to the county, to all of the taxing districts usually happens in February, March of every year for the ones that are not expiring, the ones that are expiring, that second distribution usually comes closer to June because we have to close out the books, we have to submit paperwork to the state, making sure that all of the dollars and all of the invoices and all of the projects have been closed out. As it relates to the SSAs, OBM does have to approve their annual budgets before the distribution goes out to those SSAs.
OBM, not DPD?
OBM, it's prepared by DPD.
Okay. All right. I asked you for a list of the Community Safety Surcharge Investment Fund and what was covered in that, and I did receive that this morning. As I'm looking at it, I'm wondering if you could tell me what represents new initiatives? I'm of the thought, Budget Director, that when you have maxed out your credit card and your bill is high, you shouldn't be adding new stuff to the house. So I would like to have an understanding of what is new here.
Thank you for the question. So the items that are new, I wouldn't consider them to be new. What I would consider them to be are permanent investments that were previously supplemented with ARPA dollars. But the ARPA dollars were enhancements to existing programs. So for instance, the youth employment programs, that's our youth job programs. And so that program was expanded since 2022 with ARPA dollars, getting us to the record levels of job employment for youth that we've seen over the last several years.
And that total number from last year, if I recall, was about 28,000?
29,000, that's correct.
29,000, okay.
So this not only supports maintaining that number, but it also supports us being able to increase their wages by, to minimum wage. So minimum wage increases every year. We seek to make sure that our youth are making at least minimum wage. Secondly, My Chi My Future, which is an existing city program supplemented by ARPA dollars, is also one that is made permanent at the levels that we were able to maintain during the COVID-19 pandemic with ARPA dollars. The additional new funding in here is within the Finance General section, and that is, I think it was Alderman Beal who asked this question earlier, excuse me if it wasn't, I think it was you. The additional dollars, oh, maybe it was Rodriguez, sorry.
No, it was Alderman Rodriguez.
The additional dollars where we will be able to allocate to delegate agencies who are doing crime reduction and community violence intervention work in their communities in collaboration with our partners at the state and county level.
So what I'm taking away from this is that none of these are new initiatives, but there may be increased funding for those initiatives that are listed here?
Sustainable funding, that's correct.
Increased funding. More dollars.
More dollars from a sustainable, ongoing operating budget, yes, that were previously supported through ARPA.
Can you tell me what the difference is between 2025 and 2026 for all of these programs?
Absolutely.
All right. Now, you also mentioned the major investments in the 2025 budget that are carried over in 2026. And I'm just going to use youth employment as an example. You say $20 million for youth employment to expand the opportunities. But in the violence or this new fund, that number is 48 million, so...
Right. So prior to last year, the city's commitment, frankly, prior to the mayor coming in, the city had a much lower corporate fund commitment to job employment that was expanded with ARPA dollars during the pandemic. Last year, we shifted $20 million of that into the corporate fund, and this year, the entirety of that plus the remaining amount that was on ARPA is shifted into the Community Safety Fund.
Okay. So when you give me that breakdown, can you tell me corporate, ARPA, and corporate 2025, 2026, and ARPA?
Yep.
I can't pronounce that.
ARPA.
ARPA 2025 and 2026.
Yes.
All right. I had the same question for these other major investments, so I'll skip that. How is the online sports wagering tax going to be implemented?
So I will actually, first, I'll say a few things, and I'm going to turn it to Jong and Comptroller Belsky, who will be responsible for collecting it. It will be collected the same way we collect our other amusement tax. The corporations that are subject to this tax are required by ordinance once passed to actually render payment based on the calculation set forth in the ordinance. So again, it's, you get the first 100,000 users of your platform are exempted, but it's 50 cents per user, active user on your platform that live or that reside in the city of Chicago. So it is incumbent upon them to render the payment based on the terms of our ordinance, and the Department of Finance is responsible for auditing based on the material and financial forms that they turn in to the city to ensure that they have paid the correct amount, in the same way that they do every single taxing revenue that corporations are required to render.
Do you realize that the social media tax and this online wagering tax is going to be passed off to the consumer?
You're right. So I got the two mixed up. I was talking social media. You asked about online sports betting. So the online sports wagering is in the same way that the current in-person sports betting occurs, which is, again, the companies are rendering that payment to the city. But we are changing how the tax works. Instead of it being 2% based on in-person betting, it'll be equal to the sales tax and apply to the adjusted gaming receipts of the sports wagering company, whether they're in person or online.
And what accounts for the $12 million decrease in revenue from the liquor taxes?
$12 million decrease in liquor. Where are you seeing that?
I don't have my page number here. I wrote these questions down. You can get that to me through the chair. I'll take a round two.
Very well. Alderman Silverstein, followed by Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been asked already. I did just want to say that anything that could cause a credit downgrade is of huge concern to me. I just want to put that out there. So all the questions asked by my colleagues, I second that. I did just have a question for you regarding our libraries. I know that the mayor has just said that, you know, he wants to protect all Chicagoans, and it's not just about Chicago Public Schools, but it's about parks and our libraries. But yet, you have cuts to the library positions. Could you tell us how many of those cuts are being made to the Chicago Public Library and which libraries are affected?
So as you know, the library is 100% funded by property tax. And so with the lack of increase in the property tax, we do have to economize. But there are economies to be made in the library system. I think the EY report confirms that there is economies to be made and for us to run more efficiently at a lower cost. The cuts that are being made relate to the CPL putting in place a security contract that actually is more aligned with the needs of each particular library. It's more strategic rather than having the level of security that was put in place during COVID-19 to enforce spacing requirements that were in place in the city of Chicago. It's more akin to the level of security needed per community, per library. The second area, they also will have no layoffs in their operations, but they are looking at their vacancies in the same way that all of our departments did. Very little impact on their ability to provide services within the community, but areas where they were able to economize, given their revenue.
Is there going to be a reduction in the hours, and in particular, Sundays?
No.
So Sundays will continue?
Sundays will not be reduced.
Okay. That's important because the Jewish community can't go to the libraries on Saturday, so it's really important that they stay open on Sundays. That's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Silverstein. We'll have Alderman Lopez, followed by Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Chairman. And if Alderman Silverstein and Spazaro don't mind, I'll take the rest of their time too, for...
No, you get your own ten. Everybody get their own shot.
Oh, it's worth a shot. I know Ms. Guzman is so excited.
I like your boldness. I appreciate it.
Trying. So good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, and thank you, members of the committee. First and foremost, let me just start by saying, as so many of my colleagues did, that the TIF sweeps are a non-starter for me. As I look at what is available to my ward, you are basically taking $3.3 million from communities like Back of the Yards, Canaryville, not to mention what I'm no longer a part of, which is also inclusive of the greater Englewood community. Believe it or not, we actually had TIF commitments from the previous administration totaling $24 million, which somehow have vanished from being a priority from DPD, shockingly, and are now being part of a TIF sweep that is not structural, but is concerning to me. But I do have some questions specifically to what has been presented. And I want to, and I will, Chairman, be providing you through email, a list of, through the chair request, so I don't want to spend time on those. But Director Guzman, how much of the revenue in this budget currently relies on nonexistent taxing options?
Sorry, nonexistent?
Taxing options. Things that we have to create in order to be able to access those dollars based on what was presented.
So of the ones that are currently in the budget that don't exist today, that is the Community Safety Surcharge, which we have forecasted at $100 million based on the parameters.
Okay.
The online sports betting, which is, again, we have in-person but not online, that's $26.2 million. Hemp regulatory, which in its first year, given the delayed effective date, is $10 million, but over time will be closer to $30 million. Those are the three brand-new ones. The other ones exist in ordinance today.
Except for the online...
The social media tax, but that is not something that is currently relied upon against a existing expenditure. We want to introduce it, build that fund to provide a sustainable revenue source post-2026 for our mental health infrastructure.
And that would...
We forecast it at $32 million.
32. And the head tax, which doesn't exist?
In year one, $10 million.
Okay. Thank you.
You say head or hemp?
You say head tax or hemp tax?
Head.
Oh, head tax. The Community Safety Surcharge is what I mentioned earlier, 100 million.
I'm sorry?
It's 100 million.
So that is what's part of the safety?
Community Safety Surcharge and the Community Safety Fund, yes.
So the Community Safety Surcharge is what you're referring to as the head tax?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. And all of those numbers are based on what?
Forecasts that were done by our financial analysts.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying not to make sure that I'm not rehashing what we've discussed. Can you tell me, Director, what is the total valuation of all the tax exemption or property, the, like, 6Bs, 7Bs, and all of that? What is the total valuation of that in fiscal year 2025?
Exemptions on properties?
Correct. So when we offer a 6B, a 7B, things of that nature, what is the total valuation of all of those tax exemptions that we are offering as it relates to our budget?
I apologize. I don't have that information because it's not done out of my office, but done out of DPD. So we can definitely get that information for you.
Okay. Now, I know that we keep saying that the budgets are balanced, and we're talking about some of these budgetary items like our settlements, like our overtime. And actually, what I found interesting way in the back of the book was the decrease in CPD/CFD survivor payments from $4 million to $2 million. Are we just shrinking this just to get us to a closer equation, or are there grounds for actually materializing these goals?
So the one that you mentioned in particular, the death survivor benefits, is that the one you mentioned?
Yes.
So there was a significant backlog that we've been carrying, trying to get through them for the last couple of years. We have gotten through a significant amount of that, and so we've actually forecasted out what the annual amount would need to be to support that. So that's why you're seeing that reduction. It's not to decrease what we would pay or provide to survivor families, but it's recognizing that we had a significant backlog which carried us for a number of years.
Across all departments, how many DEI-titled full-time employees or DEI-related positions, would you say, are within the budget?
How many positions are DEI-related?
Specifically categorized, is, you know, our Director of Diversity, our Director of Inclusion, or however we title them. How many would you say are within the budget?
I don't have that information at my fingertips because we don't title our positions in that manner. We do have positions that are focused on equity, that are focused on ensuring that certain principles are carried out in how we do our work, ensuring that all communities' voices are reflected in our work. But I don't have a number for you as to how many positions are specifically dedicated to that type of work.
And I just also would like to clarify earlier with regards to questioning by the Alderman of the 42nd Ward, you said that no committees were seeing an increase. But pages 109 through 118 shows every committee is getting a budgetary increase. Can you explain that discrepancy?
I'll look into that. I do know that each of the ward offices were received an increase of 8,900, if there are subtle increases in committee budgets because of COLAs. So the COLA that we provide to every employee in the city of Chicago.
Okay. With regards to the Department of Finance and revenue, Comptroller Belsky, if I may, thank you for sharing the information with regards to tickets and boots, and booting, excuse me. Are we on track to match what we saw last year because it would look, I know this is just a point-in-time, seven-month or six-month review, are we going to match or exceed what we've been able to do in terms of enforcement collection opportunities this year?
Thank you. So in 2024, our vehicle violations amounted to 260 million. Year-to-date, we're up, and we're expecting it to be at 278 million year-end.
And you mentioned earlier that you're onboarding more individuals. And what timeline can we expect those individuals to hit the streets, knowing that we have like an eight-month backlog?
Our expectation is that once hired, it takes about a month to train them. So we believe that we could have them out on the street by February of 2026.
So, I'm sorry, by February?
Yeah.
Has the Commissioner of Human Resources committed to immediately hiring people? Because we all know that it takes her roughly six months to do all of her work.
Well, I mean, it's in this budget. So once this budget's passed, we would have authorization to go ahead and start hiring.
Okay. And what are your, how many zones are there for enforcement?
Excuse me?
Well, how many zones are there for enforcement?
About 104 zones. And we try to, you know, cover those on a regular basis, but we also do use data to focus on areas where there are most violations.
I'm sorry, I've got 25 seconds. That's why I keep cutting you off. What's the target goal for the department to generate for fiscal year 2026?
Well, if we get some of these positions filled in the Smart Streets expansion, you know, that would add probably about $12 million to that number, that base number that we have about, you know, 179 to, so be over, should be over 200 million.
Okay. If I may, just one, to finish the thought, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you explain how you intend to ensure that we're able to generate the funds that we're targeting using the labor force that you have, as well as the labor force that you hope to have in a citywide manner? And I would also like a round two, Chairman.
So my management approach has always been, you know, you use meetings on a regular basis to monitor results. I also believe in using KPIs and metrics, so it'd be things like revenue per PEA. It would be things like how fully staffed are we? And so what I plan to do is have the team responsible for that, to meet with me every month, and we'll be tracking each violation and other types of revenues we collect, where they are relative to actual. And, you know, if we're not meeting those metrics, it means we need to figure out what we need to do to fix it. If we're meeting those metrics, you know, we'll be happy. So... If we're meeting those metrics, you know, we'll be happy, so...